Good evening, everyone. I call to order the August 23rd, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We'd like to welcome each and every one of you for taking time out of your evening to join us this evening. And let's go ahead and start with Mr. Lindy. Would you please lead us in the pledge? All right. Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates, present.
Ms. Bolton, present.
Ms. Bowers, here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Marowski?
Here.
President Jones?
Okay. To get it started, I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver to revise the agenda and add a resolution to amend the transfer of funds to the school-wide pooling, and also a resolution for the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual appropriation, and also to remove the budget presentation since we completed that at our last meeting. Do I have a motion?
No move.
And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is revised as presented. Now, members of the public who wish to speak this evening may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for the next five minutes. Please submit your name, your school affiliation, your affiliation to the district, your topic, and your contact information should you have a question that you would like to have a response. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special public meeting August 4th, 2021, special meeting August 9th, 2021, and the business meeting August 9th, 2021.
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Okay. Getting into our committee reports. Ms. Bolton, please present the August 19th, 2021 Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee Report.
Thank you. I just really need to thank the staff, the board staff, for getting this ready this quickly. Appreciate it. We had only the meeting late in the afternoon on Thursday, and they were good enough to put this together because some of it is needing action and then referred to other committees. So quickly, I will go through it. And there are additions to it, and there are documents attached to it as well as embedded throughout. But we'll give a good start right now. We have our monthly report from preschool promise. Their enrollment is higher than they had anticipated in a post-COVID experience. The other piece for us, our CPS preschool enrollment is on target to reach our target, and that's pretty impressive. There is an interest, as Mr. Messer brought to the attention of the committee, to have more full-day opportunities for our families because there's great interest there. So they'll be reporting back about the full day versus half-day and what we can do to expand also Montessori preschool as well. Then we had important reports that are required by our work plan, and that's a report about the Hamilton County tax incentive issue. And we've got that report that appears on pages three and four. And there's a discussion there briefly about new projects that appear. There's also, we're required by our work plan to have annual presentation on our investments, and that was presented. And we appreciated that effort and work. The treasurer brought back her five goals for this coming year for her evaluation. And Mr. Messer made a suggestion regarding expressing not only the goal but the why, the reason for that particular goal, and she agreed, thought that was a great idea. There's an effort that is going to be required for a number of committees, and that is coming out of our community audit committee. We brought this to everybody last month. There's an interest in changing the title for our current Director of Internal Audit, and it's now been brought to us by the audit committee. It's now gone through finance. It will now go back to the audit committee, I think on Wednesday. And then we'll go to the policy committee on Thursday as we change the policy regarding the internal auditor charter. And then that will kind of end when we vote on what's probably coming out of policy to agree with the new title as early as September 1st. So that was great. We appreciate General Counsel helping on that, as well as the tremendous research, not surprisingly, that our internal auditor and our treasurer did to help us make the right decision on that. Transportation. Sarah Trimble Oliver presented the impact really in part of the Metro Plan, particularly the financial impact where we might be expected to extend the day in the morning and in the afternoon. Also, the need to hire more crossing guards from the city and us paying for it, as well as perhaps finding additional supervisory requirements for pay or compensation for people as we perhaps try to meet the Metro time schedule for the buses rather than meet our time schedule. Also, it was discussed that, and we saw it in finance in June, that there is some agreement among our Yellow Bus vendors and other special vendors, and some of it is verbal understanding, as well as Sarah Trimble Oliver shared with us in June, some of the language changes in some of the Yellow Bus and specialized vendors regarding transportation. And indeed, that's now, I think, sitting with the treasurer and General Counsel, those particular. We have a number of vendors, folks, for this $50 million investment that we make every year. And then also, she brought to our attention that the current addendum needed for this year with Metro has not yet been agreed to. And so that too is in the works based upon a review certainly of where we are and what situation we're all in at this time. So that'll be coming to the, I guess, finance committee as well as further administrative work on that. And that's why this is a time-sensitive issue, certainly. We also discussed quickly, and I'll say it, the safe routes to school efforts dating back seven or eight years that also Sarah Trimble Oliver has helped redefine and also amend. It's a relationship we have with the state, and it's a relationship that we have with the city and ourselves without making our school routes safe for pedestrians and for drivers and for those taking the bus. So we're going to be looking at that, and that is going to become part of the work plan in the Health and Safety Committee beginning in September, as I recall. And that would be great for them to follow that through. We also asked the treasurer, and she presented it, and it's going to be a focus for the finance committee for a number of weeks, a number of months, and that is focusing in on school budgets in an effort to kind of pursue and better understand where the rubber meets the road and the equity issues that we have among and between our schools. We also talked in terms of growth, and that is part of the responsibility of the committee. And from that, we, again, were told about the Walnut Hills Dome as being part of SFR 2, and then other efforts being part of SFR 3, being PRM, Hyde Park, and also Walnut Hills addition. And unfortunately, the Hughes Annex, because there was not yet a plan, is kind of in limbo and not going to be part of SFR 3, but hopefully will be needed additionally, and that would be additional finances for that. Mrs. Bates, of course, talked about the Coach House at Fairview. Any of you regular watchers know that this is an important thing. And I raised the issue of the Russen Farmhouse. So that's where we were on growth. And finally, we are going to spend more time on school budgets. We are going to be spending more time on growth. And one of the big issues we had was talking in terms of the Jacobs Campus in the central part of our district. And that, forgive me for the length of it, but there's documents and charts that we posted as well as included for the board study.
Thank you very much for that summary. And I'd also like to add my thanks to the staff because we literally just had that meeting. It was nice to see that turned around and presented tonight. Any questions about the report Ms. Bolton just presented? Any questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve our committee report as written?
No move.
Second.
Second? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay. Superintendent Amat, would you please present tonight's presentation?
Good evening.
Good evening.
What a pleasure. I will be presenting the Welcome Back to School update. Next slide, please. We were intentional about reopening the school year with joy, bringing joy back to our classrooms and the workplace. The teachers came in on the 16th and set up the classroom. So we know it's important to set up a warm environment for our kids. On the 17th, next slide, please. We welcomed back our staff with a wonderful, virtual, interactive event. We had our very own Mr. Steve Siffle, the principal of Fairview-Clifton. He was the emcee for the evening. We have performances from our middle school jazz ensemble and a student, Afar, from Aiken, who sung our theme, "Everyday People." And it's everyday people who will create joy in our classrooms, joy in the workplace, and it was a fun event. Next slide, please. We did the same thing on the 18th. And we was able to get the Emmy Award-winning Kathy Wade emcee our event. Not only did she emcee, but she has been a partner for several years with CPS. We had several of our partners participate in this event, from our Girl Scouts, Y MCA, and we had a video from the Dad Initiative. Next slide, please. We were very intentional in telling our own story. There are great things happening at CPS. So students all returned in person on August 19th. We had lots of coverage from North Avondale Montessori, Pleasant Ridge Montessori, Rockdale Academy, Rothenburg, and Withrow High School. We spoke about how we were going to address learning loss. We spoke about the importance of building connections with our students and families. We spoke about just the amazing staff that we have and our families and students coming back on the 19th. Now, I would like to give you a brief update on transportation. First, Yellow Bus riders. Our service is improving. We have fewer calls than last year due to proactive communication and the use of technology. We are using Power School and MyStop to communicate information. We saw improvement from day one to day two with on-time performance, and we will continue to do our daily huddles. Next slide, please. So for the Metro update, we have divided this presentation in three parts. First, how do we prepare for the first day of school? The first thing we did was have a school-by-school review, which resulted in route and bus stop adjustments. We added additional adult supervision at our bus stops to ensure safety. We had our CPS security trained for crosswalk support. Our chief strategy officer met with the city to discuss transfer hubs. I met with the chief of police to talk about traffic and how we can ensure safety in our community. We were intentional with our communication. So for district communication, we used emails, robocalls, and social media. For our schools, again, emails, robocalls. And then we did information sessions and orientations. We widely publicized Metro support for numbers, and then we shared how to access routes on the Transit app and Google. We have been in school for three days. So we've learned some things. And we wanted to share how we address this new learning. So what we've learned? Students were learning routes. So we wanted to make sure that there was support there, and then we also communicated, if you need support, students, ask the bus drivers. They are there to help and assist. We also saw an increase in time for dismissal at Western Hills and Walnut. We added more bus routes, additional routes in particular for Walnut Route 37. We heard that one loud and clear. For traffic control at Walnut, Withrow, Schroder, and Aiken, we had additional training of CPS security. We have requested additional 11 crossing guards and two new crosswalks from the city. And then the last three, whether it's the long commute or the buses arriving early or more than one transfer, we directly communicated with Metro to adjust those routes, and those are in effect now. Now, what are we going to do moving forward? We're going to look at our data to make sure that what we're doing is working and it's improving the experience for our families and students. We're going to look at ridership. We're going to monitor tardiness and the absenteeism rate compared to pre-COVID. Myself and Sarah Trimble Oliver met with CFT and addressed specific concerns, and we will continue to discuss those specific concerns. The response was quick and immediate. Once we knew, we were right on it. I do a daily huddle with CEO Darryl Haley. And Haley and his team are here tonight to listen directly to family and students. I did share that we were having this board meeting tonight, and we have hearing of the public as well. So they are here with us tonight. Ms. Sarah Trimble Oliver works daily with Metro in planning any of those changes that we have to make. She's meeting with the city to, again, request those additional crossing guards and new crosswalks at Aiken and Schroder. We will continue to have our training of security staff. We will continue to meet with our principals to understand in real time the challenges and what can we do to improve. Lastly, we have developed in our communications department a Metro experience form that is at your table as well. So we want to hear from families that they have a place to go to that we can address those individual concerns, that we can respond quickly. So we shared that form via email, social, and the website, and we're going to also share it with our principal. We have developed a FAQ, which is on the CPS website. And I believe you have the startup FAQ in front of you. I just listed some of the questions that we have heard a little often that I will just share some responses now. One, why doesn't CPS provide Yellow Bus services for high schools? Just wanted to share for the state of Ohio, it's not required for high schools. However, CPS believes in equity, and we have paid for Metro capacity. We explored looking at Yellow Bus. However, they do not have the capacity as well. They are dealing with a bus driver shortage as well. Why did Metro make these changes? A bus driver shortage. Is it Metro required to provide extra routes? No, Metro determines which routes are offered. And kids are having the transfer multiple times. Metro committed to no more than one transfer. So we're saying, please, work directly with Metro. You can give them a call, but it is supposed to be no more than one transfer. And then I would like to close by giving our principals an opportunity. We have five principals here. Next slide, please. Who will share? It's so good when we can hear from the field, right? People who are in it day in and day out. We have first John Chambers from Walnut Hills, then Angel Roddy from Mount Airy, Ms. Amber Simpson from PRM, Dr. Carlos Blair from Western Hills, and Jamron Gray from Withrow. And they will conclude our presentation. So please come on up and share your first day experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm Superintendent Amat. Board members, general members of the Cincinnati Public School Board, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present about the first few days at Walnut Hills. Walnut Hills, we start a little bit earlier. And we start with our new student orientation. In our new student orientation, we bring in close to 600 new students to Walnut. And they're given the opportunity to learn the campus, get indoctrinated to the policies and procedures, and just to familiarize themselves with their new school. So that went really well, and it was very well-attended. And then we have our annual Walk the Schedule Night. This event was also very well-attended, and it gives all of our students the opportunity to walk their schedule. And it gives them an opportunity to find more direct paths from bell one to bell two and so forth throughout the day. So we made that a priority for the students to come back and familiarize themselves with the campus, and that was really, really well-received. But of course, going to the first day of school, we know no start of the school year goes without some bumps. We had some issues with transportation. But prior to the start of the school year, Transportation made some adjustments and added some additional routes, and that helped the school year get off to a much smoother start. For day one, you know, it took about 45 minutes to get all the kids on the Metro and get them off to school. And day two, as we refined the process, the vast majority of the students were off the campus in 30 minutes. And then today, we took that down with dismissal to about 25 minutes. So the vast majority of the students are off-campus and safely on buses or in their parents' cars, you know, by 3:30, and we dismiss at 3 o'clock. But we are still working through, you know, some of our traffic issues and some of the logistical issues with more parents picking up and dropping off during the school year. You know, we have to be more mindful that, you know, the community members also, they share the space, and we are visitors in their neighborhood. So we send reminders out to parents, you know, letting them know to be mindful and respectful of our community members because, you know, they are the stewards there. And as we, you know, continue to refine our process, you know, we want to, you know, ensure our families, you know, have the opportunity to experience the campus of Walnut, but also respecting, you know, the surrounding community. You know, however, despite, you know, some of the traffic and logistical issues that we are refining, and we're making sure that the students, you know, arrive to school and leave the campus safely. You know, I think the Walnut Hills faculty and the students would agree that we've had a great start to the school year, and we're looking to refine our practices to make the school year more enjoyable for the students. So I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to present about Walnut Hills High School. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and PLT. Thank you so much for inviting us to speak. You know, me and my colleagues, we love to talk about our schools and our students and our staff and our families. We appreciate that. In the elementary school, it was so exciting. We had energy and enthusiasm back again. Our kids came in happy. We were able to have parents in the building dropping off their kids, watching their faces. It was a part of normal that we didn't realize we missed. So having everybody back in our building was just amazing. Also, we have, at Mount Airy, we have four new teachers. And for them to be able to come back into the building and see students. If you remember last year, which we all do, we were looking at our students on a screen. It was not the same. We couldn't hear their laughter. We couldn't see their smiles. And there's a lot of that going on. We have a lot of happy, happy kids, happy staff, and happy families. So we appreciate that. This year, we get to have face-to-face after-school activities. Again, not a good fit. There's a lot of things that Google Meet is good for. We've learned a lot, but not when you're trying to connect with the child. When you're trying to connect with the child, face-to-face is always the best. And they are truly, you can see my kids. I'm just a little bit biased, but we have the best. We have the best students, the best staff, the best families. So the beginning of the year is going great, and we have nothing but great things to happen in the future. So we're excited for a fabulous school year and ready to get the ball rolling. So thank you.
Good evening, board members, and good evening to the performance leadership team members. Thank you for this opportunity to share about my first day of school experience. I'm with my school community at Pleasant Ridge Montessori. We are the first public neighborhood Montessori school. So I have kind of a magnet program in my neighborhood building. We welcomed all over 650 students back into our building on the first day of school, and it has become a tradition for us to do that with fathers. So we hosted, once again, the Million Father March, which is a national sponsored event for the Black Star Project. And we register every year, and we encourage fathers and dads to walk their children to school and then join the line. But we also engage our community, and we love seeing all the dads out there. They form a line, a double line for our children to walk through, and they missed that last year. So it was great. They came in to clapping and cheering and applause. It was wonderful to have Superintendent Amat join us for that event and to be there as we welcomed our students back into our building. Bates is not our friend at Pleasant Ridge Montessori, but we make it happen. And I am so incredibly proud of our staff and our community at large for all that they have done and the perseverance that they have shown throughout this time. So having our volunteers back and being able to offer tutoring services to our students in person as we look to address any unfinished learning. But more than anything, my alter ego is Joy. So it's always a nice joke for my little ones when they see me. Where is Ms. Joy? And I say, you know, that's my friend. I haven't seen her in a while. And when I saw our theme this year, Restoring the Joy to our Work, it just made me that much more excited to pull out my alter ego, Joy, and begin to think about how we move forward and how we continue to grow and how we offer all of our students a very, very enriching and successful learning experience. So thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you to each and every one of you for your support and consideration as we make sure that our students are in our schools learning.
First, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to speak tonight. I would also like to thank our superintendent, Tiana Amat, for inviting me. And now I'm going to talk about what occurred at Western Hills University High School. First, I'd start out by saying the students returned back with a great level of enthusiasm. The students were very glad to see their teachers, staff, and their peers. We conducted our staff orientation and discussed our academic focus areas. That was based on our ONE plan. We continued to have meetings with the Metro staff, district staff, as well as my internal staff. We met collectively, and we talked about ways that we could have the students come, transition back into the building safely, and also go to and from our school safely. We developed clear and concise communication to parents as well as staff, and we informed them on our safety precautions that we were to follow. Our football team started the season with a win, and that's always a great thing for a school spirit. And our game was well-attended from our student body as well as the members of the community. So we were very excited about getting started. What I want to also emphasize is the unity that occurred in terms of helping our students meet the challenge of catching the bus on their own. I actually had staff helping out from teachers to paraprofessionals to other support staff, our counselors, our psychologists. It was a collective effort, and everybody worked together to ensure that the students were able to get on the metro successfully and know what their route is moving forward. I also want to give a special shout-out to district-level personnel. They helped us out significantly. They came over. They asked, what is it that we need to do? And we gave them assignments, and they followed up with those assignments. So overall, I will say that Western Hills University High School started the school very well. And thanks to everybody's collaboration, we are moving forward.
Good evening, Board President Jones, Cincinnati Public School Board members, N R M Superintendent Tiana Amat. Greetings from Withrow University High School. I'm Principal Jaren Gray. I'm very excited. I'm very excited about the school year. I know our faculty, staff, especially our students, are excited about being back. Our enrollment is up from what was projected. We projected to have about 1,292 students was the projection. We're well over 1,350 students at this time. We are continuing to expand our classrooms and continuing to make sure that our students have everything that they need to be successful, to address unfinished learning, and also catapult our students forward as it relates to on-grade level work in all subject areas. We have a lot of work to do. One of the things that I shared with our faculty and staff, especially with our vision here at Withrow University High School, is really helping our students to be prepared for the 21st century marketplace. Being prepared, number one, to adapt and to adjust to change. They've been through a lot of that. They have been through a lot of that with the last year's pandemic, with the metro bus situation. They have been trained to adjust and to adapt to change. We greeted our students as they came in. We were extremely excited about their arrival. We did have a number of students arriving to school. Very excited, parents getting out of their cars, taking pictures, first-day pictures with a number of their sons or daughters. We're very excited about that. But our morning drop-off with Metro went very well. We did have some delays in some of our buses coming in, but it was due to an accident in the vicinity of our area. So it did delay some of the buses and parent drop-offs. We have experienced the increase in parent drop-off and pickup. And so we have adjusted to those challenges in terms of how our students get to school and get to school on time. We were very, very excited to have Interim Superintendent Tiana Amat visit our school and visit a number of classrooms. She was very engaged with our students, especially with a number of opening-day activities. She actually participated in a lot of them, experiencing, helping to participate in those opening activities in each of our classes. We visited a number of math classes, science, our anatomy physiology course, also one of our American history courses, as well as one of our senior orchestra strings classes. Our singer orchestra, for the first day of school, it's pretty difficult trying to get everyone, you know, instruments out, being tuned. But they were ready, and they were able to share just a little bit of their experience that they've had through the years as an upper-level class. And that particular class, led by one of our teachers, Mr. John Beasley, really make sure that our students were prepared and engaged and excited about starting the school year. We also had a presentation to Interim Superintendent Tiana Amat from our business strategic management students, really presenting them, presenting her with one of the major projects that our students engaged in last year was the food truck challenge. So we presented some of their information and data related to that. So we're very, very excited about the start of the school year at Withrow University High School. Very excited also about our staff. I believe our staff is the best staff in the district. Faculty and staff in the district, very, very excited about them. They pitched in. I saw a number of our teachers and faculty and staff helping students find their classes, making sure they knew exactly where to go on the first day. Our counseling team did an awesome job making sure that our students had all their course schedules and could make it to their classes throughout the day. So very, very excited about our entire team. Our custodial team also wants to recognize them and making sure that the building was ready for each of our students as they arrived to school. Transportation in the afternoon, we're still working through some challenges. We want to make sure that we are getting students home in a timely fashion. So we have had representatives from Metro and SOTA be present at our school to see some of the challenges that we've had. And they are working each and every day to help make sure that our students are getting home in a timely fashion. We have more frequent buses coming to handle the number of students that we have in our building. And I'm extremely excited about the start of a brand-new school year. I think as we're all working together as a school, as a district, I think together, we're going to be very, very successful to help our students get to where they need to be and to be successful citizens, both locally, state, and nationally and globally. Thank you.
And I would just like to conclude by sharing my deepest gratitude to all of CPS staff for their commitment and dedication to our students first. And collectively, we will bring back joy to the classroom and the workplace, and we are here to serve our students. So I want to keep that in the forefront in everything that we do. And again, thank you for all of your hard work, and thank you for the principals who came to represent their school. It's deeply appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Amat. That was definitely a joyful update. It's nice to get families and children back into our buildings. I felt the energy even as I was kind of navigating the traffic of the first days of school. There was no question when we rolled up, there were nothing but smiles. And I even, I sent an O T R principal to say, please say thank you to your staff. And I heard that consistently. So thank you to all of our staff for the joy you've brought forward in welcoming our children and their families back. We're going to get into the questions. One thing, I have had two texts. I said one comment about the multiple transfers. Everybody loved that. Both of these said, thank you, thank you. Where do we call? That wasn't in your presentation.
You have the number, Sarah?
Here comes the person with the information.
So we do have this Metro Customer Care Center number on our website, but the phone number is 632-7575.
632?
7575.
7575. I will note that down. Okay.
If you can just say right there.
All right. So let's go through any comments, questions, et cetera, for the presentation of our superintendent and our five, five of our esteemed principals. Let's just kind of go down the line. Ms. Bolton?
If I could, several questions and a comment. First of all, I feel I'm uncomfortable telling our families that they have to reach out to Metro individually. I am very uncomfortable about that. This is a deal that we have with Metro. And at the very least, I want this district, as one of the measurements, as to have a knowledge as to who has more than one transfer. Because that has been presented to the public, and we know that that is not the case. I know there's great efforts have been made to make that so, and I buy that. But I don't like our families having to negotiate or report to Metro their particular issue. So some way, we can also be a clearinghouse in that. Because I think there's strength in numbers, plus it'll give us a better understanding of where we are as we try to make all these adjustments, just as a comment. I miss what we said about Aiken and Schroeder. I have an issue about Schroeder that it sounds like it's being addressed. What are we trying to do about Aiken? Since I just got a couple hours ago, big picture of how many kids are standing at Belmont and Hamilton. But I'm most particularly interested in Schroeder's situation because of the companies that are so close to the high school and dismissing at the same time.
Sure, some adjustments that we're making at Schroeder is adding two crossing guards, as well as getting some additional assistance with traffic flow in that area. And this evening, Ralph Ruwan and Dan Don visited the site to put together a plan for how to support the traffic flow at Schroeder. As well as, did I mention a crosswalk as well, a crosswalk request with the city?
Okay, and then we pay the crossguards to facilitate this?
We pay the crossing guards.
But if I could follow on that, regarding, what's the role the city's playing in re-engineering the traffic? Because I don't think that's Metro's responsibility or ours.
So only
That's the city's responsibility.
Only CPD can do traffic control. We can do crossing guard duties.
We can do the crossing guard, but CPD is doing the traffic control?
Yes.
Okay. Have others come back? So keep going, if I could. As the district looks at this, just the last couple of comments, I would suggest, and I know it's going to be discussed in policy on Thursday, I would suggest that as you make any other arrangements, you look at board policies 8601 and 8602. Because right now, what we're doing, trying to make this work, I hope temporarily, and that's the other issue I want to raise, we're not abiding by board policy. So I think if the superintendent will look at that, if Sarah Trimble-Oliver will look at that, I think that would be helpful because we're outside that parameter and have been for the last several days. And the other piece is, I'm encouraged that it's that bus driver shortage that has put us into this situation. I'm not assuming it's going to be a bus driver shortage for a year or for the next 10 years. And I really want some straight talk from us and Metro and the community. And so if this is a situation right now that is temporary, and everybody's working so hard to keep our children and teenagers safe, because right now, all the mitigating things we're doing is costing us a lot of time in our school day, among our staff, and certainly some money as well. I want to know if this is some permanent plan that somebody has, and somehow we have lost what we had for a number of decades. Or is this, you know, a temporary bus driver shortage that we can address hopefully before the end of first quarter and hopefully before daylight savings time? Because let me tell you, that's going to be a different situation. As to the joy and the wonder of being back in the buildings, I weep every day that our kids are back with their teachers and with their friends and, you know, competing and doing what they need to do. And I thank all the staff members and all of the kids and all of the families that have made that possible. And I want to also thank Sarah Trimble-Oliver, who has led us through last year and the year before through the health crisis that this nation is suffering. So you've been given both big problems, and I thank you very much. But the joy is there because they're home in person. That's the joy. But we got to work this bus thing out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski.
Thank you, Vice President Messer. So the question, I think it was answered, so the 11 additional crossing guards, all 11 of those, we are paying for all 11. And see, I take issue with this too, that the city needs to step up and help us with this. But we've been saying this for years, and it's not happening. I'm glad we're going to have the crossing guards though, and I appreciate Ms. Trimble-Oliver that Ralph and everyone went out to Schroeder today. So if I can echo Ms. Bolton, the problems you have led us through these past two years are insurmountable and impossible problems. So thank you. I got with you today when Officer Don Jordan got with me, and you already took care of it regarding Schroeder. That's amazing, particularly because just for the board's edification, if you don't know, they're going to be starting construction over there too, from what I understand. And that's just going to make it even more difficult. So really appreciate that. Another thing I wanted to echo to before I get to the joy, from Ms. Bolton alluded to this. I would just like to second and put a pin in if I understand that is a difficult situation with Metro and with the driver shortage. I grew up in a truck family. For 50 years, my dad worked with truck drivers and leasing and logistics. And I know that's hard. I hear in the community rumblings of, stuff's never coming back, man. You got to get over it. And I hear it from people who aren't, you know, just like off on the periphery. So if that is true, we need to hear that today or sooner so we can start working on what we do going forward. But I would maintain, like Ms. Bolton did, that ideally, it's a temporary shortage. I mean, that'd be best for everybody, I think. And if so, then I will continue to advocate that we get our extra routes back. If it is not going to come back, then I just think we need to pull off that rather large Band-Aid at some point and quit dancing around it. Because while I think it's great that people are getting off of campuses in a timely manner, I know those same kids are taking two hours to get home if they get home. And so the metric of getting off campus is significant, I agree. But I think what is more significant is how long it's taking them to get home, particularly how long it's taking kids to get home from a school on the east side, to Mount Airy or North Fairmount versus Hyde Park or Oakley. That is a very significant metric. And those students having hours less time at home with their families is very problematic to me. Joy-wise, I just, it's hard. It is, there's so many emotions, and it's so awesome to be back at school, and things are difficult. And so the five principals who are here, I'm so glad you all are here, and I send my love. That's my man up there. And Ms. Roddy, I got to party with some of your staff on Friday, and that was a lot of fun. And while I have the opportunity, if I may, so Principal Chambers, Simpson, Blair, everybody, thank you so much. But I need to give a shout-out, made of Principal Gray. Your, one of your students, Brianna Davis, who graduated last year, is my son's favorite teacher. He's a year and a half at New Horizons in Evanston. Of course, she starts at U C in the fall to study early childhood ed. And if we're lucky at CPS, we'd get her, but I think she's got her eyes set on New Horizons. But anyway, it's a special that my son already has that kind of relationship, and all he can say is "Paul," but he loves Brianna. So I wanted to let you know that, and I'm glad you all are here tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, Vice President Messer. And I'm going to start with my joy first. My colleagues have started with their not-so-happy moments. Principal Roddy, I want to thank you for sharing your excitement about being back in person. I would agree that being in person is the most effective way for our students to learn. Principal Simpson, I want to acknowledge that your 100 fathers started in Rothenburg. Am I clear with that? Before I got to Pleasant Ridge, I want to continue. Yeah, before, I want to thank you for continuing to have a pleasant read. Plus, Principal Blair, thank you for highlighting the importance of collaboration and that that's needed with all the transition that we're going through. Principal Gray, thank you for being transparent about the transportation issues and how those barriers are not as clear for your campus as, I think, what, Trisic, is it Principal Blair stated for Western Hills? But I think I like that you have highlighted that and expressed that that was not as apparent on your campus. And Principal Chambers, thank you for updating us on the improvement from Thursday to today at Walnut Hills. I would also like to identify that Superintendent Amat expressed, or it might have been Sarah, but I think it was Superintendent Amat, that the absenteeism, we're going to compare that for pre-COVID, and reiterate the reason why we do provide transportation for our students in 9/12. Because we have 7/12 high Because we have 7-12 high schools, and I know when I saw on the slide, it says by state, we're not required to provide transportation for 9-12, but 4-7-8. Am I clear on that part? So when we say high school, that's for 9-12. But I would say the reason that we do that is because there were absentee issues prior to now. And I would hate to see that go backwards, because when we had the extra routes and we provided the bus passes, we saw absentee isn't rates go down. And so that's something to keep an eye on. And I want to give a shout out to Superintendent Amat for your social media blitz. I've been seeing all of those, seeing your pictures with you all around the district the first day or so of the school year. One question I do have is how can we, and maybe this is not possible, but I had my own observations on Belmont on Friday, and it was very concerning. I got to Belmont Avenue, kids were dismissed at 3:00. I drove up at about 3:30 and I waited. The metro buses didn't get there to 3:55 for a group of students that were sitting and waiting. And I calculated that time. And then I, and I'm glad that it was mentioned that we're going to get more crossing guards, because kids were crossing the street outside of the crosswalk, but cars were speeding down Belmont toward Hamilton Avenue and the Hill Crest. So I was very concerned about that. But I'm hoping when you said that the police are doing traffic control, that that's going to be also on Aiken campus. I heard about Schroeder, and I'm hoping that they're going to be there. But I didn't know if the city could have, Gamble has flashing lights on work road. Is it able for us to get that for the school zone for certain schools? I don't know if it is, but I would like to see that. And I know that it only lasts like 15 minutes before school starts, and maybe 15 minutes after is when the lights are flashing. Is it possible to get that extended if we can get the flashing lights to alert the drivers, this is a school zone? Because they did not identify that at all. They were zooming, and kids were just walking across the street nonchalantly, and they were breaking after they were already at the group of kids that were sitting waiting for the metro bus. So from 3 o'clock to 3:55, those kids were out there waiting for two metro buses to come in and to pick those kids up and take them where they needed to go. So I just want to see if that's a possibility for us to get that to highlight the slowing down. And I commend you on getting the extra crossing guards, and also with the police helping with traffic control.
Ms. Bates, and then Mr. Lindy.
All summer long, I was getting texts and emails and requests on social media, questioning our ability to open up on August 19. And I told every single person, we are opening. We are opening on the 19th. And we did it. And we did it by resolution, we did it by hard work, and what our job, and, you know, kudos to everybody who made that happen, because we promised the community we would do that. And after last year, there were people who, you know, with good reason, were doubting us. So, you know, we really worked hard to make that happen. So thank you Superintendent Amat for leading that. Thanks to the board for, you know, pushing that with our resolution. We did it. We opened our schools. Now, we have to keep them open. And the way we have to do that is to maintain healthy environments, and we have to have reliable transportation. I mean, that's the bottom line. We have our staff in our schools, we have, you know, our academic programs, we have our extracurriculars, but we have to get kids there by, you know, maintaining that, you know, helping to maintain their health and getting them there. And, you know, I'm not sure if people in the community know why kids are traveling from one side of the city to the other. I mean, one of the hallmarks of this district has been high schools of choice. And we have been providing options, strong academic options for all of our students, not just the ones from the east side or the west side. Kids can go where they and their families decide is best for them. And I just don't want to see transportation driving a lack of equity in providing education options to our kids. And that's really, really important for people to know. It's not that, you know, they're, that's the bottom line. It's academics and high-quality choices, and that's why we have kids moving in all directions. So we need to work this out, and we need to keep this an equitable system for our kids, and not limit, have transportation, you know, be, quote-unquote, the driver of how we provide these options. You know, the driver should be high academic quality and what families want for their kids.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy.
Thanks, Mr. Messer. I wanted to start, I think, just by saying thank you for the enormous amount of work that has gone in the last few weeks for our administration figuring out this year with transportation. Genuinely, thank you. What I wanted to use my time for was to share three things. I think why I felt pretty good going into the start of school. The first thing, the second thing, some questions that have come up just in the last day or two that I wanted to share with the administration. And then third, an idea for how we might move forward with some of those questions. So on the first one, why I felt quite good moving into the first day of school was really the last meeting we had. I thought it was wonderful to hear that when you all first heard of the elimination of the extra routes, you know, scale of 1 to 10, how worried or concerned were you, felt like a 10-plus? How worried were you going into the start of school, 2 or 3? Can you share more about why? I thought really wonderful detailed information that came out of these school-by-school reviews with some very specific concrete changes, that seemed to me quite thoughtful and quite good. I also felt pretty good, because I went to Government Square the first day of school. It was probably about maybe 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, so not right when school was out. But I wanted to see for myself, you know, what was it like? And I saw groups of kids who were hanging out, and they, I talked to several of them. They were not particularly interested in talking to me, but they were talking about things I think high school teenagers would want to talk about after school, not, gosh, I'm lost and don't know where I'm going. It felt very normal. I talked to several police officers, I talked to folks working with Metro, and everybody said, you know, this is going to be something that we need to learn, and kids are going to need to learn, but we'll figure it out. It was not chaotic, it was not disorderly, nobody appeared lost. And so all of that, I think, left me feeling pretty good. I think, the second thing, I do think just in the last couple of days, I've gotten a number of emails or texts from just different parents where a couple themes are coming up. And I wanted to share what those are. I think some of them have come up already. But one of them is around how long kids have to wait at the school before they can get on a bus, is one thing that's come up a bunch. The second one was, how long are kids on buses? Like, what is the average ride time that we're seeing for kids? And I say that just because, you know, I think we hear conflicting information. We hear, you know, one set of things that says the average ride time goes down under this plan. And then we get emails from parents saying, gosh, ride time is X, I heard ride time is Y. And so how to square all of this is kind of what I'm wrestling with. And then the third one was how far kids have to walk to get from home to their bus stop, to get from the bus stop back home. So it's like wait time at school, ride time on the bus, and walk distance. And so, you know, I find myself just not trying to sort through all of this, because I think there can always be, and there will always be, individual challenges. I'm trying to figure that, are those small in size, or are those very large in size? And so I think where that takes me is this third part, which is a request. I think it's great that we're going to be collecting and sharing data on how things are going. My request would be that in addition to things like ridership absenteeism and tardiness, can we see something on what's the distribution of wait times for kids? What's the average? What's the, what they look like by quartile? Just so we can get a sense of like, you know, what is, to size how big these challenges are. Similarly, on wait time for buses, what's the distribution of that look like? Similarly, on how far kids are walking, what's the distribution of that look like? And if that could be part of the data that we're seeing, I think it would help us manage towards, advocate for, I think it's really strong outcomes for kids and their families. And so I guess my question is, is that possible?
I would say yes. I would say yes. Quickly, for what I do know, for how long the ride is, average, no more than 55 minutes. Wait time at the school, we're asking schools 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after. And I'm not sure of the walk time. But we can pull that data together, because it's route. So just logically thinking, we should be able to pull that together. However, it's going to vary depending on which route they take. But we should certainly be able to pull something together and share that information.
All right. President Jones wanted to make some comments.
Thank you. I won't belabor the discussion longer than we've already had, but I did want to make a point, and I'll be brief in my comments. I think, I first want to share the joy. And I think we need to celebrate a successful opening of schools. This, you know, this situation with the buses sort of culminates a whole year of a lot of, how shall I say, negativity, or whatever it is, you know, the challenges that we've had. And I think we need to do more to celebrate. Our kids are happy. And speaking as a grandparent and great-grandparent of kids in the district, they are happy to be in school. And I congratulate our schools for having such successful openings, and I wish them well in the upcoming year. I also want to congratulate PLT, who responded to a very challenging situation very quickly. And even working with the city metro and the city, and trying to get all of this stuff coordinated in time to open schools on time is a piece, that's an accomplishment, and I think we should be happy about that. So my point is, whether or not this is a temporary situation or not, we have to make the best of what is in front of us in this situation with the buses. And I have to be careful, I get the same text messages and emails and all of that. And I want us to be careful about allowing the negative things, and not to minimize anybody's pain and stress about having to put kids on the bus, because we all are concerned about the safety of our kids. But I think a lot of what I'm seeing sometimes gets overstated. And let me, let me just give you one example. I happen to live right around the corner from Aiken. And so Ms. Bowers talked about the traffic, and all of that is concerning. But if you look at that stop where those kids congregate, meet to catch the bus, it is structurally deficient in terms of being able to handle the numbers. Okay? That's an issue that we have to bring to the attention of the city, and continue to work with the city about how to make that corner safe. That corner is just a narrow corner. So, you know, it looks like, and it is, a lot of kids at that corner gathering or whatever. And it is our job to make sure that as they come to that corner to catch the bus, that they are safe. But I also want to say that what I've seen also is a group of well-behaved students who are getting on these buses, going home. I haven't seen any more, anything different than I've seen when the dedicated buses were out there. I haven't seen anything different. You know, it's just a lot more kids going to one spot. So I think we have to look at this as having opportunities to continue the ongoing planning and development and collaboration that we've established with Metro and with the city and others, and trying to make this, to make the best out of what we have. And so whether or not this is temporary, I can't speak to that. And that's why we say we will collect data and relook and check to see how things are going as we progress. But I really appreciate that we've gone through some mitigating strategies, and things are working in most cases. And I have heard stories of students missing their points of transfer and all of that. And I am grateful that Metro and others have been available to them to kind of help work things out. So I appreciate that as well. So thank you, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, President Jones. If I could just add a couple of things as we close out on this topic. You know, I think something was raised, or a couple of questions on the permanency or lack of permanency of this current plan, kind of for a follow-up conversation. We could also cover in that what I think I have learned, both what I was told and then what I've tried to kind of do my own research, is this question about whether it's even per the law to be able to provide routes for public transportation that are not open to the general public. And I think, at least what I read and what I've heard, is that it is not kind of these special routes that are specific and exclusionary to the public, that that's inappropriate and that we've been notified of that. So if we could just kind of get clarity as we do the next follow-up on that and talk about the kind of go-forward, I do think that's a key component of the conversation. The second thing is, you know, I love that we give choice to our families, but I've received 11 emails on this topic since we've opened the schools, and I've tried to call as many back as I could. But I thought was interesting, the one parent said, we live in Mount Washington, we have two stops to get to our, we wanted a Montessori high school, and we're going to Gamble. And then we heard the story that was covered in the paper, somebody coming from Mount Airy because they want a Montessori high school, and they're coming all across town to Clark. And I thought, gosh, I wish, we just swap them, because both of them would be like right by their school. And I think that's a part of the complexity here. I don't know if that's possible to like, offer up to them, like, hey, what if you swap seats? Because to have two transfers, you'd probably have a direct route. But I think that is one of the complexities here that was really apparent. It was really two kind of back-to-back situations that called out, where that choice option has created a much more complex situation in trying to cross 75, et cetera, into opposite sides of the city. All that said, I just can't say enough about how this district has come together to open our doors to over 36,000 kids. And as a parent, I had a front row seat of just how this works, and having the teachers have a call with us, walk us through the forms, walk us through the procedures, walk us through, now, not everybody participated, kind of wish all the parents were there, but I left saying, I feel really good, forget about school, where it is apparent that I knew what was coming. And again, when I showed up, they didn't know when I was coming or not, I saw to every person, there was such joy. And then, you know, they wanted, oh, I'm not a, you know, Lily and said, oh, I can't, I can't hug, I can't hug, because she had her mask on and everything else. And I think that's such an important part of the fabric here. I had dinner on Thursday evening with somebody from one of the other surrounding school districts who doesn't have a mask mandate. And he said, you are so lucky that, and I would say this community came together. I had one email saying to the contrary, otherwise people have been very supportive. And I think it's that type of togetherness that will keep us in school. I've seen our staff be very positive about it, the families have been very positive. People are even wearing masks, drop off the parents in the line. So I think that's a really great sign of what's to come. But all that said, thank you to everyone who presented tonight, Superintendent Amat, our five principals, and thank you all to the staff and families and students out there. Here's to a great 2021, 2022 school year. All right. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have one and a half minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. For the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue, and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been... Pardon me? Oh, that's the one, isn't that what we took off? So once- So once your request to speak has been granted, and the confusion was there was a topic that we took off because we finished it at the previous meeting, not with the president's report, just to clarify the discussion here. So what you get, given the, granted the request to speak, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and then your contact information if there's information you would like to have a response to. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Once again, each speaker will have one and a half minutes, speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you'll briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live meeting. Last but not least, we ask that your public commentary be respectful to all those listening in, our community, our families and our students. Thank you.
First speaker this evening is Tamiko Wiley, followed by Clayton Adams, followed by Ray Nephew. Go ahead, Ms. Wiley.
Hello. Thank you for.
I think we're frozen.
Yeah. I think there's a bad connection.
Maybe we can go to the next one and come back.
Our next speaker is Clayton Adams, followed by Ray Nephew, followed by Ms. Wiley.
Hello. My name is Clayton Adams. I'm a teacher at Aiken. I'm also on the executive board of the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. Calling in today to express my disappointment with the removal of the extra metro routes for CPS students. Giving parents, families and CPS staff only three weeks notice of such a major change has created unnecessary stress and anxiety for students and staff alike. In addition to that, these cuts have created many negative ripple effects all across the district. CPS high schools are now encountering massive gridlock during dismissal. Staff are now being asked to work later to deal with the problem that sort of created. I personally believe that this decision has been extremely unfair, not only to CPS students and families, but also for CPS teachers, security guards, paraprofessionals, both administrators. The CPS staff in these buildings are left to pick up the pieces and figure out the logistics while Sorda continues to collect payment from CPS while also providing our district with less service. It is outrageous and insulting that CPS pays sort of $8 million a year and this is how they treat our students. I hope the school board members and district administration work to right this wrong for CPS students, faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ray Nephew, followed by Ms. Wiley. Mr. Nephew.
I believe I'm not. Very much, sir. In 1976, during a swine flu outbreak, 50 people died as a result of receiving injections for the coronavirus. The virus, the injections.
The program. Camera icon, please.
Sorry. It says no cameras available to use. Are you still able to hear me, sir?
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. According to the CDC's own VAERS site, over 13,000 people have died as of Friday subsequent to receiving mRNA injections. The fact that they have been fully approved by the FDA does not change the nature of what an mRNA injection is. Being against an mRNA injection does not make you an anti vaxxer. It makes you a concerned citizen. All four major drug companies have used aborted fetal tissue in the initial developments of these shots. This is an offense to my deeply held religious beliefs on the sanctity of life. Just this year, when the Alzheimer's drug after seven years was brought to market after seven years, several FDA scientists resigned due to the fact that they felt the shot did not do what it said it would do. That's after Alzheimer's medication, seven years of debate. These Pfizer injections were just given full approval by the FDA with no third phase testing, no animal studies, no long term clinical data, nothing. This has never been done before in human history. And in fact, NPR, yes, NPR just reported yesterday that the original control group for Pfizer and Moderna was eradicated when they brought those people back and injected them with the virus. I'm sorry, with the vaccine. There is no control group to compare the original group to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nephew. Our next speaker is Ms. Wiley. Go back to you and then followed by Ms. Hauser, Lisa Hauser and Carrie Kinkle. It looks like Ms. Wiley's dropped off. So Lisa Hauser, followed by Carrie Kinkle, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Hauser.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening.
And could you also turn the camera icon?
Sure. Let's see.
That's great. Perfect.
Can, oh, I'm sorry. Can you see me now?
We sure can. Please go ahead.
Great. Good evening. I'm a teacher at College Hill and I've been teaching in the district for like 20 years. I first want to thank all staff for coming to school and wearing a mask. I also want to thank the parents out there. I want to thank you all for sending your student or your children to school with a mask. As we embark this contagious variant, I'm bravely, deeply concerned. We have 15 schools that have shared nurses staffing the school buildings. My school nurse only works at College Hill three days a week. Therefore, two days a week, we do not have a nurse. These are the schools in CPS that also, like myself, work in a school with shared nurses. SCPA, Hayes Porter, College Hill, The Promise Center, Path High School, RSA Ezra Charles, Digital slash slash Virtual, South Avondale, the Kelly O'Leary Center, Chivviet, Chivviet Westwood, Hyde Park, Clark, RSA Vine and RSA Ezra Charles. Let's be equitable and have a nurse in every CPS school all five days a week. Last year, I believe the nurses were unable to give.
Ms. Hauser, our next speaker is Carrie Kinkle, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Kinkle.
Yeah, hi. I just, sorry, my mask is still on. I just, well, one, leading with joy, I guess, for the mission of your charge as a board, but why not just bring it to the public? I will say that today was the first day my children returned because we were at a family thing. And he said that it was a good first day back. So I just wanted to bring that to the community, which was a nice thing to hear. But my concern still is with Metro, as has been a voice for many people. Not so much for my own child because he has learned the bus route and I feel confident in that. But I know that other locations and other neighborhoods are not necessarily experiencing the same thing. So I just want to sort of be a voice for that as well. And that was a concern that I had really. And I just hope that some of that can be resolved. And as with the by board member, if that isn't something that can be a possibility, if the sooner the better that comes to the fore, that would be most appreciated. So thank you for your time and all your efforts for making the school year start off to hopefully a positive note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by, well, Ms. DeBono, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono and I'm a student at Walnut Hills and a member of the Young Activist Coalition. And I am here again, as I have been at every, as we have been at every single board member, to demand that restorative and transformative justice be implemented as a replacement for school resource officers in our schools. We have been speaking at every one of these meetings for months now, having listened to. Listening to hand grip, poop picks group of students enforcing a small group of people to share their thoughts about SROs and the presence of a police officer is not listening to community voices. We have endorsements from many community groups and community members that are being ignored and you are listening to the voices of people who will tell you what you want to hear. We, the data that we have presented to you and continue to mention has come directly from a public records request from the Cincinnati Police Department and is available to anybody who would make a, who would make a public records request. We also have data from the Civil Rights Data Collection, which is from data that CPS itself has reported about its school discipline statistics. This data is completely separate from our data on SROs and our data on SROs only includes data from the Cincinnati Police Department about the SROs in Cincinnati Public Schools and how they are harming our students in our schools. The data that we have from Cincinnati, from the Cincinnati Police Department clearly shows that SROs are harming our students and entering over 400 students a year into the criminal legal system. These are students that otherwise would not have to interact in the system in this way. Is data is clearly shows that SROs are harmful for our students. And there's also data clearly showing that restorative and transformative justice are effective when implemented correctly, as can be seen in other school districts, such as the Oakland City Schools District in California. Restorative and transformative justice, however, is not effective without removing SROs from our schools. And this is why we will have continued and will continue to demand that SROs are removed from schools in their places, restorative and transformative.
Thank you so much for calling in again this week.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Gordon, followed by Holly Miller, followed by CFT president. Go ahead, Ms. Gordon. Go ahead, Ms. Gordon. Okay, our next speaker is Holly Miller, followed by CFT president.
Hi, good evening. I just would like to say, I guess I'll start with my joy. So the FDA. Thank goodness, I know a lot of us have been waiting. What I'm waiting for though most is for my son, who is 10, to be able to receive his vaccine. And as many of you are aware, unfortunately, that's not the case for all of the kids in our elementary schools. So several things, this morning when my son was picked up by his driver, the bus driver mask. I'm sure everyone is aware, you're out in the community. People are, our schools are really no different. In fact. Three, just this week, my son was pulled into an assembly with 270 other students. Sitting in a drink, side by side, these children sat. We cannot have these errors. It to be back. And the joy is definitely infiltrating all of us. It includes that we have to follow the safety guidelines. Or unfortunately, as Ms. Bates stated. Up closing, we've got to be diligent in following these safety guidelines. And I just want to remind the board to please make sure that that. Protect our children, especially those who are not eligible to receive vaccination at this time. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to start out and say that it's been an exciting start to the school year. It's really sad that it was overshadowed by the transportation issue. We should have, we should have all had a smooth start. The teachers and other staff members and principals have worked very hard to try to make this work. But what is expected of all of the staff is really not sustainable. And I would hope as a school board that you really look at that sort of contract. I did receive a copy of the contract through a public information request. And CPS and Metro have a five year contract to provide extra service routes to CPS students. The contract runs through 2022. Metro did breach the contract. Metro agreed to provide special bus passes that can only be used on extra routes. And those routes are no longer available. Metro also agreed to provide safe and timely transportation service. And they have failed to do so since eliminating the extra routes. Our students have reported getting lost trying to navigate unfamiliar routes and services, which is not safe. Our students must now cross major thoroughfares, including Madison Road, Clifton Avenue, Glenway Avenue, Victory Parkway and every other major intersection within the city. And many of those are indicated on the metro route developers that they are with a caution warning. Teachers have reported students arriving during first and second period, which means they've lost instructional time and that they're disrupting other students' instructional time by coming in late. Metro says that their contract with CPS doesn't require them to provide designated service route. Yet Metro has agreed under contract to provide, and I quote, restricted passes which can only be used on extra service routes. Now Metro is no longer providing extra routes and they're no longer providing restricted passes for those routes. How is this not a breach of contract? Other provisions of the contract also make it clear that the parties understood their agreement to include extra routes designated for CPS students. This has been the party's agreement and understanding for decades. This suddenly changing course just weeks before school is not only irresponsible, it's unethical of a breach of a contract to our students. If this isn't a breach of contract, if Metro had the sole discretion to end these routes, it shows Metro and Sorda Board's total disregard for the taxpayers of Cincinnati and their callous decision should never have happened to the kids in our city. This disruption has not been good for anyone. Metro and the Sorda Board are worse than a Scrooge at Christmas. Let's do the right thing and restore our extra routes for the safety of our students so that we all can safely make it to school. I would also like to say that even if it's a small number of students, as a school board member this evening said, it's not acceptable even for a small group of students. And probably those students are the most vulnerable and the students with the least resources. And we must really push Metro to start hiring the drivers that we need to reinstate our routes. And we must also have those routes starting to phase back in so that we can have full routes coverage before the end of first quarter, which is prior to the change of the daylight savings time. Once that kicks in, not only will our kids be having all of these issues and crossing, but they'll be crossing in the dark and then it will be having, we'll be having bad winter weather. So we really do need to fight for this and we cannot sit back and say, put our hands up and say, oh, well, this is Metro's decision. We must all fight to get these routes back for our students. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are kudos and special recognitions. Does anyone have any to share tonight? Anybody? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, Mr. Messer. I have a couple. I wanted to thank our interim superintendent, Ms. Amat, for the wonderful speech and welcome back presentation she gave at the events last week. I thought it truly did a remarkable job of recognizing the moment we're in as a country and as a school district, while also, I think, telling us more about why your leadership matters so much for the district and also about the role that every person can play in doing right by kids this year. I wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanted to appreciate, I just will say again, everybody who's worked to problem solve everything related to transportation this year. solve everything related to transportation this year. And I'll just add, I then wanted to thank Sarah Trumbull Oliver and I believe it's Leslie Bryant on her team for problem solving one particular school together. I just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Morosky?
I'd like to piggyback off Mr. Lindy, if I may, and certainly add my appreciation to interim superintendent, her entire team for getting the year off to as good a start as it ever could have been amidst COVID resurgence, transportation woes, et cetera. I truly can't imagine, so I want to send my appreciation. And I also just want to add to that appreciation, all the teachers who embrace their students amidst hardship at the onset of this school year and welcomed everybody back so that the kids could have an enjoyable experience. A lot of the students with whom I've talked, I mean, well, all of them are really excited to be back in school. And so kudos to the teachers, the parents, the staff and everybody in those buildings, custodial cafeteria and everybody, building operators for ensuring that we can be in school safely start the year.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I'll wrap up with just a couple. Couple are duplicative, so just adding my kudos to the superintendent, her leadership with her leadership team to open our schools across this district, jumped in headfirst. I thought you had cloned yourself because every time I looked at social media, you're a different school. So thank you for that. I want to give kudos to the Transportation Department. I know we've spoken about Metro. Transportation transfers a whole lot more students and that's the yellow bus. And I remember joining this board and I was inundated at one point in just what a kind of a mess we had there. And I think it's worthwhile to say thank you because that from all, you know, all accounts that I've gotten, people got their notifications early, they had their questions answered. It seems to be running on time, so thanks to our transportation team and first student for all their work and especially their drivers for transporting our kids. A special shout out to our treasurer and her team who've led us through a very thorough budget process and we've come together and given lots of feedback. Most importantly, we've gotten community feedback and I feel really good about where we are and thank you for your leadership and guiding us through that process. And then, as we've said before, just thanks to our staff, everybody who faces our children, whether you're cleaning in the buildings, whether you're cutting the grass, whether you're welcoming them at pickup and dismissal in the preschool or kindergarten lines, everybody plays a role in making sure that this school year is a success. And then, of course, including the paraprofessionals and teachers who are there in front of them each and every day. We thank all of you. All right, so let's transition now to Ms. Bates. Do you have any retirements?
I have one retirement and I'd like to acknowledge Amy R. Jamison, teacher at Dater High School. She is retiring as of June 1st, so we thank Ms. Jamison for her service to our children and wish her well.
Thank you. All right, under Board Matters, Mr. Morosky, could you kick us off with the discussion on the mandatory vaccination policy?
Yeah, I'd love to. Thank you, Vice President Messer. So I asked that the proposed mandatory vaccine policy or required vaccine requirement be placed on Board Matters today because it is on the agenda, our policy committee agenda on Thursday, 9:00 AM, in person at the CPS Ed Center, our first in-person policy committee meeting, gosh, since last February, maybe? The first one ever with this crew, anyway. So we'll be talking about that again on Thursday and enough board members have brought it up that I thought it would be important, since we've already had this discussion at least once in a full board session, to see if there was any input, if anybody had any input, before we head into Policy Committee Thursday. I will add my input quickly is just the rising cases are very concerning to me. It appears that we are fairly far away from the end of COVID and a number of members have said this tonight, if not all members, that we, none of us want to have to say the word virtual again when we're talking about learning. And it does seem that the vaccination is proven to be one of the best ways to help us avoid doing that. And so I would just love y'all's feedback if you want to give it before we head into Policy Committee on Thursday.
Ms. Bates and Ms. Bowers?
I think we should take a look at the policies we have for mandatory vaccinations for other vaccinations such as the flu, for, you know, the DPT shots. But take a look at that and make this consistent with those now that at least one of the vaccinations has received FDA approval. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Messer. As you're reviewing Chairman Morosky, I want to share that Ms. Bonger expressed to the Health and Safety Committee that there is a workforce development issue with mental health providers and I know their partners. So I would encourage you to express the importance of this with our partners and realize that we have several schools that do not have mental health services because of that workforce shortage and that will also be another barrier to the COVID vaccinations.
So if I heard, because I want to take these notes, if I heard that correct, were you intimating that if there was a vaccine requirement that it may disincentivize partners from being in our buildings?
Well, because of the workforce development issue without the mandate, that may be a barrier for partners getting permissions when hiring.
Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, Mr. Messer. I think at some point, I would love to see a list of organizations locally who have passed vaccine mandates, both private sector and public sector. It'd just be good to know kind of what other organizations have decided to do this. And I also think it could be helpful to hear just an updated medical perspective, either from our children's, I would imagine, or from the Health Department on, given our current level of vaccinations, what's the marginal benefit of the additional that we would pick up through the mandate?
What was that last part?
A medical, so given the, I heard the number like about over 70% of staff are already vaccinated. So I would love to hear from a medical expert, what's the, how to think about the extra benefit we get from that last 30%? I would say I'm open to this, by the way. There's just pieces of information that would be helpful.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, one of the things that I would like to know, and perhaps you can discuss it in policy or if the administration's able to do some of the research. I know one of the things that people talk about besides they were waiting for this to get approval and then they would do it, now that there's approval, we'll see if they will do it, for one. Fortunately, it's the one we did. So my interest is, some people say, well, if you don't do it as a mandatory thing, then indeed we need to have testing. If you don't do the mandatory vaccination, then we're going to have weekly testing. My understanding, and maybe it would be helpful for general counsel, not today, but obviously a policy, to explain to us, is that mandatory testing, because of some of the things the state legislature has done, even in our state, would that mean that even the people that are vaccinated would have to go through the mandatory testing on a weekly basis because you can't, at least my understanding is, treat unvaccinated people differently than vaccinated people? So I would like to have general counsel tell us about that and then also general counsel be able to inform us about what state law here in Ohio is requiring of us and whether it's even possible that we would have mandatory testing for 6,000 employees every week.
Ms. Jones, I got your note.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. I think it's, I think the timing is right to give reconsideration, so I'm happy to hear that the Policy Committee is reconsidering this policy. I think what I'm saying, what I want to say is no different than what I'm hearing other board members say. I think I'd like to hear more about the legal aspects of this in terms of, you know, if we do pass a policy, how we do fair enforcement. Ms. Bolton's ideas about using testing as an alternative is certainly one way to look at it, but I think also looking at waivers around religious, religious choice and things like that, we need to hear more about that. And I was glad to hear Ms. Bates say, we need to look at what currently exists in our policy. But I think the timing is right. I do happen to feel, I firmly believe that a lot of people will get tested just knowing that the FDA approval happened today, at least I'm hoping that, but I think the timing is right for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. My comments are that as a parent and a school board member, I want to see everything we do, see us do everything we can to keep our kids in the classroom. I struggle with the fact that I have no idea if the people in front of both of my children in the district's classroom, in their room with them, is vaccinated or not. And I ask about that, I don't know what the actual answer was, if we can actually report that out, but I'm uncomfortable with that. So anything we could do to make sure we remove another possibility for entry, the better. I shared the New York Times article today that, right after it was announced that the vaccine that approved, the Pfizer vaccine, which is the one that our district used, so it's those people who are, you know, covered. The next article was that in New York City, all education staff, anybody that connects in any way to the children who are in the New York City schools has a vaccine requirement. So my request would be, obviously they didn't share the details of that, but I bet it's available online, utilize that as a benchmark to see how they structured it. I, you know, I raised it a couple of weeks ago that I'm also very supportive of giving people an out. There are some people, for whatever reason, there's a risk factor, et cetera, that may prevent them from wanting to have the vaccine or actually getting the vaccine and I don't think it's too much to ask to have those people, as long as we can do that, at least agree to having the testing. All that said, I think we have to move that direction and what will come with that, I believe, as it's come with my company, we've heard it from the hospitals throughout our region who have required it, other organizations, there will be attrition. So we need to be looking right now at our recruiting in the event that we do that to be ready because we cannot afford to skip a beat. So we've got to begin, as that's been a part of most every organization that I've heard, there's been a segment who have refused and have chosen to work elsewhere. Any other comments? All right, thank you. Our next topic is Hamilton County COVID-19 status. We did get an update today in Health and Safety. Mr. Morosky, any additional questions on that?
So thank you, Vice President Messer. This is perfect to follow up, I think, right after the requirement piece. So I just, I wanted to ask the board and Board Matters, I thought it was important to bring up the, what we're all probably feeling and reading and I just, I know in Health and Safety's talking about it, so, and that's good enough, I think, for me, but for the public's edification as well. I don't know if anyone else has an appetite to begin getting our Health and Safety reports again, but when I look at them, because we get them in our, in our board packets, we get the Health and Safety updates still. And the numbers are concerning. Hamilton County has been tagged as having rapid spread. I know y'all are seeing the news cases as I am, that children are beginning to die around the country, that these variants are sort of attacking young people with a vengeance. And again, as we heard a speaker say tonight, you know, there's some of the kids can't get vaccinated. And on our own CPS website, you know, at least it's something like 22 students have tested positive in the past few days now. Granted, no school transmission, so we're still doing a good job with that, but I do have concerns when I look at our graphs and that the numbers are rising and that we're not talking about it as frequently here like we used to. And I just kind of wanted to put it out there and see if there may be an appetite to have the presentations that we get, which are great, that I know Ms. Trumball Oliver puts together in our Port of Health and Safety, but maybe start having them here again. I've, we talk about receiving emails and texts and messages and all that. I would say the majority of mine are about that. And then transportation, I work, we're not on that right now. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there and see if that might be something people were amenable to. I think it would maybe be good for the public to see us talking about it.
Just to be clear, we're not discussing that together in text.
That's right.
Just to be clear. We've been on that road before. So, Ms. Bates?
Yeah, I would like to comment on that. So having a written report posted on the website, you don't think, I mean, you want somebody to come up to the podium and put this PowerPoint on rather than posting a written report? Because I think if we post a written report, you know, that that could be sufficient.
Sure. I think, and I agree, I think that that is good, but I do think there's value in the back and forth Q and A we have with, you know, Ms. Trumbull Oliver, our friends from the Health Department about this, particularly again, is the numbers. And what I see here and what I see in my day job are, the numbers are very concerning. And, you know, we're starting to see employers take steps. I don't hate to say backward, but it's true. Like a lot of the stuff in my, at Children's Hospital are going back to the way they were slowly but surely. And I just, I think it would be good and I think there's value in the back and forth.
Hi, Mr. Messer?
Yes, President Jones?
I just wanted to say that back when we were doing those regular reports, the board, actually, the board worked with the administration to make sure that that particular report was done on a monthly basis. So there was a time, you're correct, Mr. Morosky, when we were getting it on a regular basis. And after the presentation, like in a board meeting, it was put on the website. I think the challenge that, and whether or not we, I mean, I think it's important, I think people want to see it, I agree with that. I think the issue is, we also said to the leadership team that we wanted them to narrow the number of presentations on the agenda. So I think it comes as an issue of, if people want to add that as another one, then we can anticipate that our agenda will probably have not only the health, the Health and Safety report, but a transportation report and any other update. So it comes as, you know, how do we prioritize that? But I don't think there's any reason why we can't do it on a monthly basis.
Right. That's not like, yeah, Mr. Morosky?
And that's why, President Jones, 1,000% correct. That's why I thought it was a good, like, Board Matters item, because we did, we were getting so many reports at once. And when we decided to not have these anymore, I think it makes sense and it just, it just feels like it makes sense now, again, to just have that public interaction.
Good. Great. Next, we have an update on the superintendent search. I will give just a high level. Probably people might be wondering what in the world's going on. Well, there's been a lot. The board worked together to develop an RFP to select the executive search firm who will help us go through the work in recruiting our next superintendent. Once that RFP was developed, it was released, then we had a window where there were opportunities for questions from those who were thinking of responding, to ask those and have those questions answered, and then they were able to submit their proposals to us. We received nine of them. The board has taken great, great and careful consideration to reviewing these.
The board has taken great, great and careful consideration to reviewing these on a variety of metrics and have narrowed that pool from nine until nine to five. There are five, not nearly parting song, but the five RFPs that we will be going forward with. And two of our board members will be working with our recruiting team to comb through those and bring back a recommendation, looking at the agreed upon criteria. And then the board will make that decision by early to mid September for that firm. And then things get exciting. We actually start the process of them doing a nationwide search to find the absolute best person to lead Cincinnati Public Schools going forward. More to come as we progress through the process. Okay, Ms. Bolton, could you please cover the growth discussion?
Thank you. Appreciate it being placed on the agenda. It is a part of, as many of our folks know, part of the strategic plan, one of the five major areas of effort. And indeed, certainly the most recent issues that we've had regarding Metro's plan for transportation have highlighted, as Vice President Messer mentioned. And also, as Ms. Bates has mentioned, it's highlighted the way we are organized geographically and programmatically. And whether or not it is sustainable or whether or not it needs to be adjusted, not because of only transportation, but because of providing appropriate choices in, in both PK all the way up to 12th grade. But indeed, this is a PK 16 district, as far as we're concerned. And I know the superintendent feels the same way. So the growth piece is to figure out how the best organize ourselves to achieve the excellence that Ms. Bates mentioned, and also the choice that has been part of the heritage. So it'll be focused right now on, in Finance Committee, because that's where it is placed in our protocol. But I would imagine it's very likely that every, every meeting that probably will be part of Board Matters as we try to have the public become even more informed and be able to participate more earnestly in how we organize ourselves regarding our neighborhood schools, which we've been working on for now four years as part of the Vision 2020. Certainly our high schools of choice, but also the great growth in career end, as well as the need, as some people believe, that may be for neighborhood high school. Certainly, too, we've seen a reduction in number of magnets, but also an increase in the emphasis and the interest in Montessori education. And we are one of the centers for Montessori education. There are those sorts of issues, as well as a growing population of both immigrants and refugees that now are gracing the district and then helping our schools achieve and, and helping to redevelop neighborhoods. So there's lots of things happening as we try to figure out the growth piece. And part of it also is boundaries, if you will. To your point, Mr. Messer, about attendance boundaries. It's probably time to look at many of those. It might be some time to move some magnets from magnets to, to neighborhood schools. At any rate, we want to get the public ready for that discussion. Parts of that discussion have been taking place for almost four years now. When we look back, whether it's the purchase of Mercy so that we have a competitive and outstanding Montessori on the West Side, or whether it's indeed some of the additional programming, like the creation of the CAN School to provide neighborhood schools. There's lots of things we've been doing, but now I think in a more conscientious and determined way, it's probably time to start acting and get the public's involvement with much of it. Part of it, and let me close on this, part of the growth plan, too, frankly, has been the preschool promise and the explosion of preschool. That's been part of the growth plan. So the growth plan isn't starting today. It didn't start with the strategic plan. Through a lot of good leadership over a number of years, it's existed. And it's been developing. It may look fragmented, but it has a vision. And I think that we have to kind of share that vision and also get the practicality part of it and take action. As part of the new CPS that we keep heralding. But through these other issues and crises that we've had, we haven't been able to emphasize it to the public as much as we want to. So I look forward to it. It'll be in Finance. But everything we do in Finance will be coming to the full board and through the, through the community. And it might be a great thing, too, is to merge with the superintendent search, because there's such great interest, community-wide, about the superintendency that, you know, we will have lots of community involvement in defining that profile of the superintendent that we may want or what have you, or the community wants, might be part of redefining, too, the profile of the district. So I think those things can merge and we can have a tremendous amount of community input.
Thank you for that update. Such an important conversation that you will be able to see and/or hear in Finance Committee meetings going forward, of course, the updates being brought here to the floor. Great. And, and I don't want to steal our superintendent's thunder, but she will be giving an update on attendance here in a few weeks. Let's just say Cincinnati Public Schools is back to grow. So more to come on that. So even more reason for us to have this conversation. All right, Ms. Bolton, I know some of this topic at least was covered in the presentation earlier, tracking effectiveness of metro routes. Okay, Mr. Roski, sorry. It was on my script, my apologies.
All good, no worries. So, yeah, the, this item of tracking the effectiveness of the metro routes, to your point, I do think a lot of this came up. And the reason I thought it was important to have under Board Matters was because at least three board members at at least two separate meetings recently had brought up that, that issue. And we certainly have talked about attendance. We've talked about quite a few things. And I know the superintendent has been writing them all down, so I, I know you have them. So I was curious, I wanted to maybe give some space. I thought it would be important, especially since members have been bringing it up, to maybe voice what we thought some of those data points were. Like for me, a meaningful data point is the, the length of time to get home vis a vis last, you know, the extra routes. So again, I do think it's notable. I'm not taking away from the fact that we can dismiss students in a timely manner. I do think that's notable, I really do. But what, to me, is maybe as or more notable is then how long does it take to get home? So that's one I would add, of course, to attendance. And, excuse me. Another one, and you know, it's two sides of the same coin, I think, is, you know, the missed, missed routes. And I know there's some user error that goes into that as well. But when, when I drive around where I live downtown and I pass a number of our high schools where I go very quickly. And I was driving around today at 3:00, not on purpose, so I could see how things were going. But I, it was, there is a lot of kids all over the place on very busy, crazy roads, Withrow, Taft, I live right in, driving around. So missed routes, and then again, maybe time to go home. But I just kind of wanted to open up, see if there's any more in addition to the, I know there's been so many tonight already going around. So that's why I wanted to put it up. And then I know the deputy, if you have something, because I would love to, because I know, again, you've been writing them down, so you probably already have a list.
I just want to make sure that I have everything represented here. We have ridership, tardiness, absenteeism, a distribution for how long the wait is, how long the ride is, and how long it's a walk.
Mr. Lindy?
I was just going to say, if that sounds great, and to just echo one thing that Mr. Morosky shared, I think something we can compare it to. So, so on those measures, like what, where we can, what was it last year? So we can see, is it getting better? Is it getting worse? Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, maybe, maybe two years back is better.
Ms. Bolton?
At that point, the pre-COVID years, I don't know if that's 1819 or 1820, whatever that would be. I think something else to, to figure out is how many more people are driving their kids to school? Or how many kids are now driving that wouldn't normally have been? I don't know what, I don't know that we have the statistics as to what it once was. But environmentally, as well as the hours that are being consumed and the disruption to family life. And we always knew dismissal was the issue. And I appreciate all the things everybody's tried to do, but dismissal remains the issue, the biggest issue. And, and, and without the city doing what it should have been doing for a number of years, which we asked it to, we even entered into a grant with them of a million dollars, which actually doesn't go very far. We don't have to, to someone's point earlier, we don't have the safety infrastructure. So I would, I would really like to have, and I know we have the data because we have the safe routes efforts, as well as some other folks' efforts. I'd really like kind of an inventory of the safety infrastructure around our high schools. Because we're not required by law to do it, so the city hasn't done it. And the state doesn't require it, so the city doesn't do it. And we request and request, and it's very piecemeal. But there are two big studies that want to give a list. I think that kind of infrastructure, safety infrastructure should be there, as well as, I think we should have a kind of a traffic count and also have CPD, the Traffic Division, tell us about their issues around our schools. I'm sure there's other things, too, that we can come up with. But I think it'd be great to have some of that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on that?
Just one comment.
Mr. Morosky?
I don't know that it was highlighted well earlier, but I do want to highlight and encourage everyone to share the survey that the administration created soliciting feedback from parents. It's a pretty clear survey. Is it good? Is it bad? Why? Why not? I mean, it's, it's deeper than that, but it's a pretty solid survey that's going to give honest feedback. And I've shared it, maybe unsurprisingly. But it's really good and it's on the website. So again, I don't know if that was highlighted well, but it's solid. For folks who are watching, share it out so we can hear how things are going. I think it was well done. Kudos to Krista Boyle and her team in Communications Department on that one.
Great. And I, and I think part of also in this is helping everybody understand who is responsible for what. Some things we can handle very directly and others, we really have to depend on our partners. I think as many people know, there's been a lot of development happening in the Evanston neighborhood, for example. So lots of people have moved in over the past year when the Port renovated all those homes. And somebody contacted me today, I called her, and she said, well, it was a mess last year. DPS needs to do something about these students and families using our streets in Evanston. It's making it difficult to go to and from work. So obviously, there's some challenges with all of that. Not the least of which is, you know, we, they're public streets and that's where our students have always gone and where they go. And we actually, as a school district, can't go out and control traffic two and three and four blocks away from the school. However, you know, I did pass it along to the superintendent and also to, to city council members, because there has definitely been a population increase in many of those homes that, you know, were boarded that I remember over the past few years. Now they're being inhabited. It's a different environment. So anything we can do with our city partners there and wherever else there might be challenges, I think all the better, because it will definitely help our Vision Zero and our safe routes to school initiatives. We all work collaboratively, school, city, neighborhoods, et cetera. So, thank you. All right, resolutions. Ms. Bowers, please present the following resolution for board consideration.
Thank you, Vice President Messer. I have a resolution before me, appointing an official delegate to the Ohio School Boards Association 2021 Capitol Conference. I present this resolution as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
We have, we have this.
Mr. Lindy?
Who is the person?
As I had that question earlier, I understand we have four people who have signed up to attend. And whoever will be selected will be from that group. And we will do that at a subsequent meeting.
Sounds great.
Great. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, because the resolution has a blank for names.
I have.
We have.
I have, we need to pick one. We don't, this is a resolution appointing an official delegate. So we need the name of the official delegate. So, and an alternate. So that's how, we just can't have an official delegate and not have an official delegate.
Traditionally, or over the last several years, I believe it's been President Jones. And I nominate her.
I know, since she's not here.
Great.
She can't object, right? I think that's great.
Mr. Lindy?
I mean, is it, is it, is it, I'm trying to think about the fact that President Jones isn't here. Can we hold this until she's back?
No, we gotta name it.
What's the urgency on doing it now?
Yeah, we're gonna do it right now.
But why?
I think they need to know who the delegate is up in Columbus, getting close.
Yeah. We're ready.
Okay, I'm probably going to abstain until Carolyn's here.
Any other discussion?
We need an alternate.
Do we have an alternate of somebody who's planning to go? Bowers?
On the team.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have Ms. Jones as the delegate, Mr. Morosky as the alternate. Are you ready to do the vote? Now, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Abstain?
Abstain.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes. All right. Ms. Bolton, please present your resolution for board consideration.
Okay, I've been handing it over here. I've got this to hand out. Be happy to have anybody else do it. Which one do you want me to do? This appropriations resolution? Yes, this is okay with the treasurer. I understand it. This is fiscal year 2122 annual appropriations resolution. Cincinnati Public Schools being resolved with Board of Education, Cincinnati City School District, Hamilton County, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the said Board of Education during the fiscal year ending in June 3022, the following sums be the same and the same, are hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes that are listed. I submit and hope for approval. If not, nobody gets paid.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, Mr. Messer. This was for just Treasurer Wagner. I appreciated seeing the figures for all the different title funds. I didn't see Title II on here, and I was curious if I just missed it or why that is.
Yeah.
It's Fund 590, improving teacher quality.
I got it. Great. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present your resolution.
Yes, I have a resolution to amend the transfer of funds to the school-wide pooling fund approved June 25, 2021, from the general fund and Title I for fiscal year 202122. I present this resolution for adoption as printed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
And we're on the last page. All right, Interim Superintendent Amat, do you have? Interim Superintendent Amat, do you have any additional reports outside of your earlier presentation?
No, I just have the written report I would like to submit for your approval.
Wonderful. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Moroski?
Do I have a motion to approve the report of our treasurer, Ms. Wagner? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I have several questions on the revised treasurer's report, page four, the talks B, the hospit.
Hospit.
Does that address the issues that we've been talking about regarding being able to trace or no?
It's getting us started. There's a, we have to RFP it because the estimate for the whole year is greater than $100,000 according to our procurement policies. We have to RFP those things, but this will get us started with the first project.
It'll get us, what did you say?
It'll get us started.
On the identity of who's responding?
On, I don't want to answer for Ms. Boyle, or actually, it's Title I schools, Title II schools, some of that demographic information.
It'll get that?
Title I, yes. Yeah, moving forward, yes.
Okay. Then on page five, the Teach for America contract, that this is the final year, will a new one have to be issued? It's the E on page five. Explanation, is it through June 22? Is that the contract ending?
Yeah, that's the third of the 33-year agreement.
Okay, so a new one would have to be taken care of.
Yes.
And then, real quick, on page six, just trying to find this out, on A, Roman numeral 2A, is this now make ABC whole, or is this a start of something new?
This is to make them whole.
Okay. I think I have one more that was, oh, yes. On page nine, again, it's sort of a whole question again, for the CYC, the Cincinnati Youth Collaborative, is this returning back to what we have, or is this a new contract? Is this about restoring what we have?
No, we're not returning all the service. This is JCG. Just that one particular program. We had three programs with them. This is for the one.
Okay, so, but that's something we have, and now it's now being funded.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Moroski?
Yes. Ms. Bolton, on inquiries and updates, you have Safe Routes to School Travel Plan and Vision Zero Resolution.
Yes, thank you. This came up in Finance, and I just wanted to remind folks about some aspects of what we've done already, and this is in respect to the safety issues. We, as some of you know, passed, this is the second part, pass it down, this, we passed in September of 19, the resolution supporting the principles of Vision Zero, as did the city. And I think it's time to kind of perhaps review what we passed. Because what we've now doing in the Metro Plan, and what we're probably requesting ultimately from the city, is to live up to that resolution that they've passed, but also that we've passed and that also the city has passed. And I have a, I have some copies of the city one, but I'll hold off on that. I just want to make sure the administration gets a full dose of it. I'm very concerned that we are not, that we are creating an environment in which we are compromising that resolution and the safety that we were trying to address. The person that drove through Clifton at four or so on Thursday, granted, it was early in the whole process, having all of our kids at various bus stops is a worry to me. And the kinds of safety infrastructure that the city has committed itself to in Vision Zero, I don't see it necessarily around our high schools as I think we should. So I want to kind of resurface that. The other, if I could ask the administration at some later time, maybe, hopefully, maybe September, that if someone could also brief the board again, because there are newer members, and it's an important topic, that we could somehow be briefed on the Safe Routes to School, not just the first edition of it, which was, you know, 500 pages or more, but also the addendum or the amendment to it, and the principles, as well as some of the strategies and tactics that were part of that Safe Routes to School that we committed ourselves to. So I just wanted to bring it up because I know we came up in Finance and some of us were surprised that it exists or what have you. And I know it's been, as we said earlier, referred to health and safety, maybe as part of that, you know, as health and safety takes over that responsibility, maybe then, maybe on October, kind of a date might be good to understand the Safe Routes to School commitment. Because some of us really lived long to get it done, and it is done, but now it's a matter of implementing it and making demands that it be implemented. So I just wanted to bring Vision 20, both for the city and the school district, as well as the Safe Routes backup, because we were very committed to that at that time, and I think we are transgressing some of those commitments.
Is that something, perhaps, like an assignment to the Health and Safety Committee?
Yeah, as we did out of Finance, that you guys are putting that on your work plan, which you agreed to, but then also, maybe no later than October, at least a general kind of overview for the whole board and the administration. I know Sarah Kimball Oliver's been involved in the second rendition of it, and it's very impressive work. And it was once a joint grant between the city and the district, and then also, I think they've amended it to make, to qualify for the state efforts on it. So I think we need to know more about it.
Ms. Amat?
Yes, I just, a point of clarity, I have a health and safety update, a transportation update, a Vision Zero update, and a safe school route update. Can these presentations be done at camp?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Since it's an administrative meeting, and then we can just do it there. Okay, thank you.
Oh, great. Put them all together for a wonderful safety conversation. Excellent. Okay. Do we have any assignments? I didn't see who was first. Mr. Moroski? Mr. Lindy?
I had a couple of inquiries before we leave this.
You have?
I have a couple of inquiries. Okay, time to share? And I'll be brief. In a couple of past meetings, I had brought up the idea of a quarterly parent survey or family survey. I wanted to just ask, does that require any kind of action from the board and anything? Is that something that's already moving and on its way? That was one question.
The first step we are doing is doing the RFP process to have a survey platform that meets that qualification, and then we can move forward. John Murphy, Assistant Superintendent, leading that charge, not only with the survey, but also working with here, but we wanted to make sure that we had a platform that really provided the demographic information. So that's what we're working on now.
What's the timeline on that?
What is the typical timeline? Did you say two months?
Usually takes about six weeks, depending on how quickly people respond and how quickly they can, how many respondents they have.
So best, and I will hold nobody to this, but just best guess on like when we could actually launch the survey?
My guess would be after first quarter.
After first quarter?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are putting together topic along with cohere and topics that we can do for the survey. So what we will do is bring those topics to the board, because part of this is being proactive. So PLT came up with some ideas of what we wanted to survey the parents on, so we will share that with the board before and get your feedback as well.
I really appreciate everything, so thank you. And then last, this was an inquiry that I did mean to ask during the busing discussion, and I apologize, I didn't bring up earlier. A number of people have reached out to me about a quote from somebody at Metro that was in the news about their willingness to reinstate the extra routes. Is there any serious conversation about reinstating extra routes, whether that's this year or in the future?
The, Brandy, I believe her name is, is the communications director from Thora, and she did say publicly that that is under consideration if they have the capacity of filling those bus driver positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moroski?
Thank you, Vice President Messer. I had made, I made an assignment, oh, gosh, it was a while back, about adding the word Montessori to the gamble sign, and it still hadn't happened. So I didn't feel the need to make an assignment, I just wanted, and this was, this was, we had a different superintendent, it was, it was a while ago. It was said that it would happen, and that was during the school year last year, now it's the new school year, and it still doesn't say gamble Montessori.
Was it for both of us?
Sorry, for the high school.
Oh.
Both? Oh, both, 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 high school and the elementary. That's it.
Good, and I think, truth be told, there was a broader conversation to do an assessment of all of our buildings to make sure they were signed correctly. So maybe that's something that facilities could take a look at, because I definitely think there's an opportunity in some spaces at least to even say that they're a part of Cincinnati Public Schools. So I think that's really good. Any other assignments? Ms. Bolton?
Assignment, I would like to have the administration research and report back Metro's protocols regarding COVID.
Great. Any other assignments? Going once, going twice, and we are officially finished. Two minutes till. Folks, it's hot out there, so please take care of not just our two-legged friends, but our four-legged friends, and thank those people that are greeting our families to and from school, standing outside with their smiles. And as we said last week, take care of yourselves and each other. Have a good night.